And we're back to the normal meeting. Uh, thank you for joining us residents. We have one person watching. I think that would be me. Um, but people watch this afterwards.
Gotcha.
Let me go back to zoom here. And I'll just put this over in the corner. So with me tonight is Hala Walak. Walak, is that how you say it? Walt, Walt, Hala Walsh. Um, and she's a member of the Highland City Youth Council. And also on our inclusivity committee and we'll talk to her a little bit later about her experiences with that. But we're delighted that she could join us. I would like to start the tonight's meeting with some brand new hot off the press news. That um, some of it's good, some of it's not so good. So the good news part is that the county is going to set up a immunization center in North County. Right here uh, at the intersection of Lehigh, American Fork and Highland. Down it's what as what's known as the Equestrian Center Park. For those of you that haven't uh, been there or would like to see what it's like, let me show you, let me share my screen. And show you the on a map. Where this is. So Hala, can you see that? The map? Okay, so the North County Equestrian Center is this area in red. Uh, this road that goes north to south is sixty eight thousand. That's the road to Costco. Costco is right here. And so the road that we were they're gonna set it up right in here and I'm not sure if it's gonna be a drive through or a walk in. But there's a lot of space there. The county owns the property and we just found out this afternoon. That they're planning on setting that up. Hold on a second. I'm getting a call from somebody that might be about this meeting. Hello Renee. Good. I'm actually doing my meet with the mayor. Yes, so if I'm on YouTube live, I will call you back afterwards. So say hi to everybody. I I thought you might be calling about that. Okay, Renee says hi to everybody. Okay. Bye. Okay, I thought this was that's a resident that's active in our community. I thought it might be about there. So anyway, they're gonna start this. I believe they wanna have it ready. About the time they about March first when they start. Sixty five and older immunizations and then anybody that has a list of maybe twelve different health conditions that would allow them to get the vaccine earlier. And I guess in all of Utah, that is about four hundred thousand people just with the health condition. There are a lot of people that are gonna get immunized and then after that sometime between May and July. Uh, the rest of us are gonna be getting immunized if we want to. And so they wanna have this center up and ready, up and running and ready to get the to handle the influx of people. They expect about fifteen hundred people a day at some points to be going to that center to get immunized. So because there's gonna be that much traffic and it's gonna run probably through the fall. They've asked us to delay a road improvement project we had scheduled to fix that. I'll just say what it is. It's a horrible section of road that has always potholes in the winter and it's it narrows down. So that's the bad news. The good news is for those that wish to get immunized, there'll be a place close by where we can uh, schedule appointments and and have that happen at a convenient location. So that's the brand new hot off the press news. I've only been able to call one council member to hear it. So Hala, you're the second person I
Lucky me.
Outside of the the city. Um, now the other road projects that were planned, we're still going to be able to do. We're gonna finish up the East West Connector. The road that that goes between Alpine Highway and North County Boulevard. And and now when you go to school, you just you go down into American Fork, would you need to go and cross there or is it?
No, I usually go down to like I go past the hospital and then I turn like on the street with JCWs and stuff.
All right, that for those that live in on the west side of Alpine Highway and want to go to Low Peak High School or Walmart or the temple or the hospital, uh, this will be a much quicker route. And hopefully it will take some of the traffic off the north end of North County Boulevard where it gets really crowded.
Yeah.
You know about that because of getting onto North County Boulevard is an adventure.
It is.
That's that's where you live. So anyway, those things are gonna happen. We did have a a meeting, a council meeting last week where we talked about the park by Mountain Ridge High School. And staff presented a plan that showed uh, putting in the parking lot, the phase one of the project would be putting in the parking lot on the north side of the property there, Solon ten four hundred. And then putting in some pickleball courts, a bathroom and and all abilities park or half of what the full park will the full playground will be um, with the budget that we have.
That's cool.
That there are supposed to be about three soccer fields worth of grass, but that'll have to be done at a later phase. Uh, because the money we have just doesn't cover that cost. They're going to get some more details on the costs, come back to council at a meeting in the near future and go through the costs and then council will get to uh, decide when they wanna start that project and uh, how they wanna proceed. So that will be kind of exciting.
Yeah, that is. I'm excited.
Like pickleball?
I do. I love playing with my friends, so.
I don't though. I think eventually there'll be eight. I can't remember on this plan if they were gonna put four in and then four later if they're just gonna put eight in all at once. And then three soccer fields worth of grass is be a nice nice entity.
That is really cool.
And uh, of course you know where Mountain Ridge Junior High is and you know that field to the west where we we do the movie in the
Yeah.
Right?
Fireworks, yeah.
With the flame. We did one last year, right, Hala?
Yes, I believe we did. I think we did.
Yeah, council took tickets and and made that happen. So that's one of the other good things youth council did. So let me unshare my screen. Back to pictures of you and me and let me check and see if there are any questions on YouTube. Let's see. Too many windows up at the same time. That's my bad. My problem, not yours. Uh, so there are two people watching now. So that must mean Renee has joined us. So thank you for joining us Renee. If you have a question, just um, go ahead and type it in. Oh, now we have three. So we are growing in attendance here. To have more people on. Hala, let me ask you, you've been on youth council for a couple of years now?
Um, I was on it last year, but I'm graduating this year, so I'm on it. So.
So you were on it and you're you were on it and
Yeah. I'm not on it now. Yeah.
You're off it now?
Yeah.
Finished at the end of the calendar year, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So tell me about your experience on youth council, whether it's something you think other kids should do and what did you learn and how do you think it it's made into something different in your life?
Honestly, I loved it. It was probably like, I don't know, at the time I wasn't really involved in anything outside of school. And I was just doing schoolwork and like stuff with family and friends, but I wanted to be in something like that I belonged to. And so I joined youth council and it was just really enlightening. Um, I'm not gonna say that I had a really bad attitude about service before. I was gonna say that I would only go to service projects if there was food after.
Okay, that's normal, right?
Yeah, um, but I like went to the service projects. I participated in the activities and it was just really like wholesome, you know, made me feel good. I was doing things that made other people happy and I got along with the kids a lot and Corinne is just great. So overall, it was a really good experience.
So what committees were you on?
I was on the government committee and that was it. But we organized like um, a plan to this Capitol Building or the trip to the Capitol Building and that was really cool. Uh, we also just helped with like service projects here and there, but it was a lot of fun.
So what what were some of the service projects you did?
Um, we did. So we made a bunch of like, we filled a bunch of Easter eggs, but then when we're gonna put them out for Easter, but then COVID kinda ruined that. So we just passed them out the parade. We, let me think.
So you did the parade too then, right? You collected the food from Tabitha's Way?
We did. Yeah, we collected a bunch of food for Tabitha's Way. We put flyers out in every neighborhood that a council member was in. Um, a youth council member. Let's see.
So you did your area there around all the the Scottish names?
And we got a really good out like outcome. So it was really nice and
I think there were seven bins that you filled up?
Yeah, there is about seven and it was really cool. I was proud of myself and the rest of the team, of course, but um, yeah, the parade was a really good, like really big success. A lot of the little kids loved like getting candy handed to them, seeing the Easter bunny dressed up. It was just really cool. I liked it. So.
And then uh, let's see the, did you, were you involved in the trick or treat this year?
Um, I wasn't there for that activity, but I heard it was good.
It was really good and then
What?
Senior dinner this year? The senior dinner with the band? There was the senior dinner with the band?
Oh, yeah, that was super cool. Like we put, we spent a lot of time into that. And so I don't know, I wasn't able to be there for the senior dinner dinner, but I planned it and it was just really cool. I saw pictures and stuff. Did you enjoy it? Did you go?
Loved it.
Gotcha.
Normally we have thirty to forty, maybe fifty people attend our senior dinners.
Yeah.
This year we handed out a hundred and fifty meals. And there were some that attended that just didn't want a meal. They just came and brought their lawn chairs and just enjoyed the music. They're really a good band and it was really, really fun.
Yeah, I'm glad about that. But yeah, I would recommend city council, youth city council, like any, any kid really. I don't know. I didn't even think I'd really make it on cuz I don't really have a lot of experience in the area. I didn't. And I don't know, it was just kind of a one shot thing, but I made it on and I'm glad I did. It was a lot of fun. So.
Yeah, and I think now they they a lot more people get on than than when you first did it, right?
Yeah, and even when I first joined, like there was a lot of us. There was like I don't know, around the twenties, but before they usually only have like ten and eleven. That's what I heard. So. Yeah.
And then you got recommended by the the head of the the youth council, adult, I shouldn't say the adult assistant. Corinne, you recommended that you participate in our inclusivity council or committee that we set up. Now that's a, that's a whole different group that has the uh, the police chief is on it, the principal of Skyridge High School is on it. And we have a couple of council members, myself, Erin from the city.
Yeah.
Who else is on there? You're there with Sarah Ossler.
Yeah, also, yeah. Um, yeah.
And it's a different, it's it's a couple of youth with a lot of older people, adults.
Yeah.
What's that like?
Um, not gonna lie, it's probably the first meeting I felt like a little out of place. I was like, what am I doing? Like, I don't know. This seems like a good thing, but do I really like am I, I don't know, do I really have an input in this? You know, am I or am I just kinda here to represent like black people? But like, um, as like the months like kept on going by, I don't know, I've started to feel more comfortable. And and like talking a lot and stuff like in the meetings. And so I love it. I honestly do. I don't know. It's good to see that somebody like within the city and people throughout the city are coming together and to try and help make a change to um, certain situations where people I don't know, are are judged or not accepted or anything along those lines. And so it's really cool. And I love the people on it. I think it's a nice selection of people. Like there's a principal, there's police officer, like you said, city council members. It's just really productive and I love it. So, yeah.
Hey, well, let me, let me do a pause here. I just had somebody let me know that the comments aren't working on YouTube right now. And so if you want to uh, ask a question and you're on, just text me at eight oh one, three one eight, seven one four one. Or send me an email at mayor@highlandcity.org. So I'm not sure what happened that my, that we can't comment or I I'm sorry, can't not able to fix that, but um, we can go ahead and working on YouTube, right? Uh, text me or send me an email and I'll try and watch for them while we're talking. So anyway, back to, back to you. So let me ask you, did it, has anything come out of that? Um, meeting, those inclusivity meetings that are productive?
Yeah, I think so. At least at least for me, um, cuz I took what we were talking about in the meetings to my school, Players West. And I was able to kinda like implement some ideas into like their school program and system. And so now, once a month, we like focus on one group, like one group that's like, I don't know, like people who are homosexual or black, Hispanic, I don't know, just minority groups. And we focus and like hear about their voices on like living in Utah, like their experiences and interactions with people every day. And we just give them a chance to speak and they don't have to, but most of them do. And it's just really nice. I don't know. They say some enlightening things that I don't know, like some biases that I noticed I had. Um, I don't know, they're starting to fade more. So I just, I just think that it's really good. I like it.
Okay, um, now I thought, did the police chief come and meet with the youth council? Was that? Oh, since you're not in it, you wouldn't know, but I
Uh, I know there were plans um, for him to do like a Zoom meet or something like that.
I think they they did arrange that meeting to happen. So that that has happened. So that's a positive. Uh, I don't think that's happened before, but I, but the feedback I heard back from that was good.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And I really like, um, I I really like what's going on. Renee just wanted to get an update on what's happening with the Equestrian Center. So we're back to talking about city business.
Gotcha.
Think of anything else you wanna say about youth council or the committee, feel free to jump in. But Renee wanted to know about the the youth, the Equestrian Center. So brand new news today is that the county is is going to start using that in the near future as an immunization center for North Utah County. And so for the next year, anything that was planned there is on hold. So that's the news. Um, that's new. So whatever was being discussed is on hold until that's done, uh, simply because it's uh, they're gonna take precedent and we think at this point that it will, that using that as an immunization center will run through fall. Uh, so nothing will happen between now and then. So I I don't know what's gonna happen with the future of that. There was um, the county did do an RFP last year. And my unders, my supposition and and understanding is that the the responses that involve building homes are not are out of consideration, that the person or the entity that was doing the the rec center is uh, is uh, gonna resubmit a proposal for using six and a half acres and not building any homes. And then taking part of their proceeds and applying it towards the the surrounding area as as a park to improve it. Uh, but there has been no vote by the commission on what to do with it next. I think it was just a decision that the that was made in conjunction with the the health director to use that. I I don't, as a immunization center, I don't know that it required the commission vote. All I know is that today we got an email from the county public works director asking us to delay our road improvement project there for a year because they're gonna be doing that. So uh, they are gonna be doing uh, the immunizations there. I I don't know that it needed a vote. Uh, and if it did, I presume they've taken it. There was a meeting on Monday. Uh, an emergency meeting of the can, the commission and then there was another meeting today. So they might have done it at today's. I didn't watch that. But I do know we got an email this afternoon. So that's what I know, Renee. About that. And you're welcome to call me or I'll, I'll, I'll call you after this and and talk to you further on that. Unfortunately, yeah, this says YouTube is telling me the oops, something went wrong. And I can't uh, I can't turn the chat back on. It just says something went wrong. So I'm afraid if I reboot it, that we'll disconnect and lose it. So again, email me, mayor@highlandcity.org or text me eight oh one, three one eight, seven one four one if you have a question. So what questions would you have about the city or being on youth council? What did you learn about how the city works that uh, people might not know?
Um, I didn't, I don't know. Like when I going into the council, I wasn't really like, I didn't have any awareness of how anything worked really. But I know like I never had really considered it before, but on youth city council, like we were split up into sections like government um, service. I can't even remember all the other ones, but we're split up into sections. And she's like, this is kinda how like city council is. Everybody does their own part. And for me, I don't know, it was probably kinda dumb. I didn't even realize that, but um, it's just I I don't know, I kinda thought of it as like an assembly line that they all work together and get the big picture done or item done or whatever. And so that was cool in my opinion. And it like being in my own like group made it less like less overwhelming to have to focus on every part of like a project or something. Like, I don't know, with service projects, I wouldn't have to like do everything by myself, if that makes sense. We each split up and did our own things to make the service project happen. So that was really cool. And that's what I learned.
The city is organized um, as well, right? They have, we have different departments. So we have uh, public works and in public works, there's there's a group that focuses on roads. There's a group that does sewer. There's a a a group that deals with culinary water and then another that deals with pressurized irrigation. Now that they're all cross trained, so they can help each other when they have slower busy times.
Right.
Um, if we have a sewer problem, it's all hands on deck because that that's very, very important. Um, we had a issue a couple of years ago with a neighborhood where seven homes had their basements uh, get some sewer sewage in it because there was a stoppage in a line. So that that was pretty yucky. There was in a couple of them, I think it went up to six inches in the entire basement.
Yikes.
Yes, well, it was exciting. Uh, it did get resolved in a couple of months. You know, so that they they were all made pretty much whole. But there was, there were some rightfully grumpy people for a little while.
No doubt.
It was a contractor that did something that was they were fixing the road and they got they plugged up the sewer accidentally and they they had to make it good. But uh,
Gotcha.
Sometimes when you're in the middle of something, you you're, you know, you can't see a month or two months ahead. When it's good, you're just living in something that's less desirable now, right?
Yeah.
It affected your life in a negative way. Uh, we also have the parks department as part of public works. And so they they hire a lot of help in the summer. They have a few full time people. Um, but most of their uh, people come on part time in the spring and then that ends in the fall. So we have a lot of temporary people. And then we have our our inspecting department. That's a one person is our building inspector and we have planning. That's a person. Uh, we have Nathan, who's the city administrator that oversees everything. We have finance. We have HR. So for a little group, there's, they're pretty busy.
Yeah, no doubt.
Responsible for. In fact, we have less staff today than we did in two thousand and two.
Really?
We've grown a lot.
Yeah. Um, I'm sure.
Have been able to economize. Uh, but sometimes you just have to grow. There has to be uh, people.
Yeah.
So I know I'm gonna ask you a question about what what are, what are your friends concerned about today? I mean, what what consumes their life? Does it do you, do you even have a social life out? Because we're largely stuck at home, right?
I do have friends. Um, I don't know. I think a lot of like my friends are just worried about like the virus, you know, like when is it gonna end? When are, when are our lives gonna go back to normal? Are they gonna go back to normal? Um, like that's a big thought in a lot of our minds. Um, I don't know. Honestly, like a lot of them don't really think about like how the city is doing very much. We're all just kinda like thinking about school grades, like friends. Do I have a date to prom and like all that other things? So.
Is there going to be a prom, right?
There is like, there are some like individual proms going on. I don't know. I probably won't be going to one, but I know that there's some happening. So. Yeah.
So I hear some, I, let me just read you a letter that Brad Frost sent me that he wrote uh, last year. And um, this is interesting because it's, he has a hero award in American Fork. He's the mayor of American Fork and there is a Highland resident or or youth that attends American Fork High School. Um, his name is Ryan Bazell. And so this is the cut, this is a couple of paragraphs out of the letter. Since, since eighth grade, Ryan has been saving up every year to buy flowers on Valentine's Day for every girl in his school. This year, Ryan delivered a long stem carnation to every girl at American Fork High School. About twelve hundred into in total. With the note, there is something in you that the world needs.
Oh, that's so sweet.
Now evidently, the the mayor Frost told me that in a few instances, it it caused girls to weep because they were touched by that.
Yeah, I would cry.
Oh, he got this nice certificate and letter um, that recognized him as a American Fork hero. But there's somebody that's not thinking about himself. He's thinking about other people.
Right, right.
Cuz he saves up and to do that and that's
That's amazing.
I don't know what a carnations cost. Fifty cents a piece? Oh, I don't think they're a dollar, but
I don't know.
That's six hundred dollars. That's a lot of money.
Yeah.
But it's good to do that. And he continues to do that. And he's done that for a long time. So that's the kinda thinking I think we need, you know, the selfless service, the stuff that you look at on youth council, right?
Definitely. Yeah, and I know like I have, I don't know, from youth council, I don't know, I've kinda just have like this mindset, like ever since starting high school, is that people are just I don't know, I've kind of just have like this mindset, like ever since starting high school, that people are just kind of self-centered, like at that time in their lives. Cuz they're all trying to just do their own thing, but like the kids are on youth council are just amazing. Well, the fact that they're on youth council just says something, you know, they wanna do, they wanna make a change, whatever. But I know some of them closely individually and they just really care about other people. They just wanna help like without a reward most of the time, so. Yeah.
And there are meals after your meeting, right?
Right, but it's worth it. It's honestly worth it.
So good, it's just, it's another way to get outside yourself and. My dad gave me some really good advice when I was young. He said, you know, when, when you're sad and depressed, just go out and help somebody.
That's what my mom says all the time.
And it works, it, it, it does work because you get out, you, you do that, you get outside yourself and. Life is, is good and I, you know, the people that run for city council, for example, and you've met. Brittany was your um, city council rep, right, on the youth council?
I think so, yeah.
So she's an example of somebody that got out of her comfort zone, ran, running is not easy. I don't know if you've run for office at school or anything, but it's, it's never easy. You knock on doors and you take a risk, right? You may not get elected.
Yeah, I definitely know. I am student, president at Claris. Effort for sure, to get elected, so.
And then not everybody's always happy with you, are they, or are they?
Well, I try to see the interest of every, like all those students, but like there's always some moments where people are like, I don't like what you're doing. And so, I don't know, I just kind of have to compromise with them.
We all do. Well, you're, you're having a really great start to your life, so good for you.
Thank you.
Councils, the government. Oh, good on you and you're, you're not shy. I, I don't know if I mentioned this, I can't remember, but one of the things that impressed me about. Hala is that in our meetings with the police chief and the principal and the other council members. That she would just, you know, speak her mind, share her thoughts, share things that were sometimes. Personal and maybe. Experiences that you, you had that were less than positive. And then you, you've had positive, you have a lot of positive experiences too, but. I love that your attitude is always, the glass is half-full and I don't see you as a half-empty person. I think all of us have problems in our lives all the time, right? So you never know what we're, we're dealing with. So anyway, that's really impressed me that uh, someone your age would just chip in and. It's like you're just a regular person on the, on the team there and you're, you're not anybody different. Just to share with the, the residents uh, something interesting in. Not this meeting, but the lo- the second meeting ago, so that would have been in January. Uh, there was a, a thought that Joe Perkins shared. He's the principal of Skyridge High School and he said, you know. There are things I wish people knew about me and I would love to hear. What other people. Would like to share about them that people don't know. In his case, he has an artistic, I think it's a son. Do you remember if it's work? And he said, one of the things that I wish people knew is that they can talk to my son because. They often talk to me with my son present and say, how is your son doing? Instead of asking him. And he said, my son is very capable, even though he has autism and he wished people would understand. That they could just talk to his son directly instead of through him. And I thought that was great and then we, that started a whole chain of, of thoughts about, well, here's something I, I wish you knew about me. Maybe next, you know, that I've lived through this and all of us have. Um, maybe not you, but I'll, as you get older, you will, you will find something in your life that is really hard that you get challenged with. We've had some issues with our family and, and illness and, and some other things that were really, really hard. And, and I don't think that goes away, unfortunately. We always think that, okay, we're done, but. Always more and I, and like COVID, who would have thought? A year ago, cuz it's not quite when COVID started yet, that there would, such a thing would happen.
I get it, cuz uh, recently, I think he, I believe he's a Highland resident, but one of my best friends, Jackson Key, I'm sure you've heard of it. Um, he passed away like in, on January first and it was just. It was alarming and really awakening. And I don't know, ever since his passing, like just more things have been happening. I've been like having to face more like deaths and stuff. But. I think in a way it kind of just makes me like stronger, you know? And I'm able to help others more, so and in his case, for a while, he was like, he would act different from other people and people would make fun of him. And stuff, and so on inclusivity, it kind of just. I don't know, when we talk about things, I kind of think of him and, and he just comes to mind. It just makes me wanna like be more like. Do more, do. Do the most I can to make a change or make a, put a drop of water in a fire, you know?
Cause it, it, at least in our case, inclusivity is about everybody. It's about. Don't feel. They're welcome for whatever reason, right? Religion could be whatever, that they're different in some way. Be disabled. Uh, it's just really, really. Hard and. Even when we're adults, we don't always. We are, aren't always considerate of other people and what they may or may not going, may or may not be going through, so. Uh, it is, it is eye-opening sometimes to hear what other people go through, like, oh, I didn't know, if I'd have known. I would have treated you differently, right? So good for you for uh, being involved. We are at seven thirty eight. Let's see if I have texts or emails. Let me check that. Um, no texts, let me check on emails. And I'm really sorry uh, those of you that may or may not be watching. That uh, the, the chat thing isn't working on YouTube, but I, I really don't know. How to fix that, so we don't have any there. Do you have any questions for the mayor? Hala or Bob City, things that you might be curious about as to why? Or why not?
Let me think. I really don't, I can't even think of anything right now, so.
Well, then you know what? We'll end this meeting early. There's nothing wrong with ending a meeting early, right? So long, but I wanna thank you for joining me today.
Thank you for having me.
And I wanna thank the residents uh, who watched this or may watch this later. It's been a pleasure talking with you, Hala. I'm really glad I've gotten to know you be- got to know you better as a result of our interactions.
Thank you.
A lot to be with. I can't wait to see what happens when you get older. That make a difference in the world, so thank you for being you.
Thank you for influencing me.
You're very welcome. With that, good night to residents. We uh, will talk to you next month. Uh, if you have questions about the city, you're always welcome to email me or call me. My number's on the website and I, I try to be very accessible and uh, if you see Hala.